All right, everybody's ready? Okay, so it is 1:02 PM. April 4, 2022, and this is a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We have with us today all county commissioners, all three of us, county attorney Chris Boyd, and county manager Tim Birdman. So with that, if everyone will silence their cell phones and please join me in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Thank you very much. All right. So with that, can I get an approval of our agenda, please?
Um, I, can we shift the Daley's Fire Department presentation to item two? Network. And I can also, I need to pull that up so I can post it in the Zoom chat.
Okay, we will move to number nine, to number two. Okay, and everything else seems to be good, correct?
Yeah.
All right. So making that move, I will look for an emotional prior agenda.
A move that we approve. With that one, movement of agenda, nine.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Seeing none of those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, so.
Oh, yeah. That would be me.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, community informational items, we'll start with Commissioner Teeger. Get on this thing.
Sorry, my, I posted it sloppily posted in the chat. Without change.
Yeah, maybe just a couple of things. I think on the Justice Center, on the board rep on the executive meeting there, we've been looking at the ball roughly selected to hire a design firm. And there's interviews were held with, we, I think we're a great applicant pool of five, six, or five firms as far as just like down to three, and it's hard to select the top there, but we, we have a preferred and point Canada, and it's just doing some final contract checking and reference checkings for actually announcing that. But we will have an architect onboard soon, and the general contractor, you know, construction company, that will be going out very soon. And that work will start fast, like they, they're essentially, the sort of design burden is already being impacted by materials. And they will launch immediately and launch, and it will be pretty rapid over the summer, getting that design work done. You know, with the construction company and getting pricing.
Okay.
So I think you're really moving, and they're doing the best. Cool. Yeah.
Well, we have like a standing agenda item sort of on monthly, or sorry if you just said that.
No.
Because of the way things will be moving, we'll probably
Yeah.
have to have conversations or at least decision making.
Yeah, we should definitely talk about like what kind of updates we do, but Point Canada will, will start doing biweekly updates initially, sort of like written things that are public. And then if we even need to, we can have executive sessions sit on any decision that there needs more like a negotiating. I suspect to, when I'll be go. The things we make with big price implications. Do we need, do we need to negotiate on, but yeah, we'll start getting written updates of progress and updates.
Cool.
Excellent.
Yeah, actually, maybe we could have like the work session on sort of like, it will be sort of like community and user stakeholder group.
Great, thanks for that, thank you. Commissioner Mudge?
Sure, um, we are continuing work with the Community Welfare Protection Planning and hoping to do a couple more outreach meetings with subdivisions and neighbors for feedback and more engagement on how to best continue with communications as we move through and are poised for applying for other funding with partners on fuel mitigation. So I think our, we met with Chief Daley this morning as well as some other partners and, and to hopefully host something at the end of April, very beginning of May, dividing the county into northern and southern regions with those subdivisions. So look for some of that communication coming out. We got it better planned over the next week, hopefully.
Cool.
Yep.
Wonderful. Um, I think for myself, just a note that we received some preliminary information from our consulting firm on local transportation to implement local transit. That information was presented at the state of the community, but if anybody missed it or would like to send additional feedback, you can contact myself or the consultants, or I can put you in contact with the consultants as well. But that project is moving, moving right along, and we should have a final report on the feasibility of local transportation in June and what that looks like for our community to have some form of local transit. Also, just wanted to remind everyone that we are hosting an event this Thursday, 5:30 to 7:30 for Community Justice Listening Tour at Great. So if you're interested, we would love to have you there to talk about the community justice model with our community, with our new justice center. So just wanted to remind people of that work that's also being, being done. So, okay. Anything else before we move on? No? Any commissioner clarifications?
I have none.
None today? Okay. So now we'll move into public comments on items not on the agenda. Under public comments for items not on our agenda, you'll have three minutes to give a public comment regarding an item that we are not discussing today. We ask that comments are kept respectful and also remind everyone that this is not an opportunity to engage in conversation with the board, but rather just to, to give us some public comments for feedback, and if further action is required, then we will go from there. So with that, we do have some public in the room. We have Nancy and Jason from the EDC. Emily from C4, Anne from Building and Land Use and Chief Daley here with us. And so anybody in the room have any public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, so we'll go to the Zoom forum, and I see Jamie, Cypher, you have your hand raised, so I will let you take the floor for three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Marcela. Hello to the rest of the board and, and anyone in the room. I appreciate all the work that you're doing, and I'm just here to echo a comment that I made a few months ago regarding public access to engagement when it comes to meetings like this. You know, it's a tough time for a lot of people that are working to come to a meeting at one in the afternoon. And I would just again like to request that the minutes actually be posted online. I know you guys put up the YouTube links, but those are hours, not minutes. And I think it's just increasingly difficult for citizens to kind of quickly get up to speed without either attending these meetings at a somewhat inconvenient time or sitting through the equally long amount of time on a video at their leisure. So, uh, yeah, just wanted to say that, and thanks again for all that you've been doing.
Thanks, Jamie, we do appreciate it. Um, I don't see any other public on the Zoom for any comment at this time.
I'm gonna go.
Um, I think Colleen is here for the, the least.
Okay.
Vincent, and then I don't, Colleen, unless you have a public comment, I would like to give an update on COVID.
Hey, guys, it's Colleen and the Director of Lake County Public Health. I don't have any updates, but more than happy to answer questions. As you know, we continue to monitor the situation. We are interested in the BA.2 Omicron variant that's out there. So far, we are doing well as a county. I just continue to ask folks to make decisions based on their risk factors. There is opportunity to receive booster doses in our neighboring counties that have the CDPT vaccine bus coming up. We are pushing out that information. If we find that we get enough folks here locally who want to receive it through us, we are doing what we call batching, because currently when we open a vial of vaccine, we have to use it within 12 hours, and if we only have one person, we don't want to waste, depending on which one it is, either, you know, six doses or 10 doses versus trying to get kind of a group of folks together. But our surrounding counties have plenty of opportunities if you feel that that is what you need next, because vaccine continues to be one of our strongest tools against COVID-19. So I can answer any questions if there are any, thank you.
Thank you, Colleen, I really appreciate it. Does anybody in the room have any questions for Colleen? Chat to Sarah? No? Awesome. Okay, so with that, we will move on into business. Okay, number one, we have an annual update from the Lebo Lake County Economic Development Corporation. So I'm going to hand it over to Nancy Bailey and Jason Hall. You can't, you can do whatever is easiest for you guys.
Um.
Okay, sure. He's gonna do an intro, and I'm gonna. Sounds good.
This is Jason Hall, President of the Lake County Economic Development Corporation. Here and he's our director. And we've got a presentation for you guys that's, so beforehand, but one thing that wasn't on there, just wanted to tell you a little bit about is the residency project that we're working on. And what happened there was Climax, which is pre-part, where I ran, approached us to see if we wanted to check in with. And no, we're, approached us about that, and we're partnering with Better City on that as well. And what that is, is we're just examining sort of the ways that economic shocks can affect us here in Lebo. So we're, we're meeting regularly there, and you're planning a list of, but could, you know, damage our economy. And then from that, not really, it's not really to come up with a plan, like a preparedness plan or anything like that, but to come up with a couple of actual items out of there. So at the end, there's $10,000, up to $10,000 in grant money. We're going to kind of try to figure out which ways that that is best spent here in the community. So that's going really well, we're really excited about that. Better City will be here tomorrow. We're going to kind of get mature on that down stuff, and then they're going to be doing a lot of interviews, they may have approached some of you guys. And also, Tim Birdman has been meeting with us, and Laurie Simonson from the city administrator, also, so that's going really well. They, they could have chosen anywhere in New Mexico, Arizona, all the places where they are, different counties, but they, they chose us, so it was a real honor to have that. And then we have not been giving quarterly updates to you guys, so remember that happens annually. And Nancy and I are just returning our communications and keep you guys in tune with what we're doing, and then give you guys an opportunity to also ask those questions, or if there's something you guys want us to work on, we can let us know. So we'll do it on the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Jason. Nancy Bailey, Executive Director of the Lebo Lake County Development Board. Um, so as Jason mentioned, we are just upping our game in terms of communicating with our funders and our partners. So that you guys, we're not going once a year, saying, look at all this great stuff we're doing. We're doing a multitude of things to kind of increase and elevate our communication. So I brought a link, there's gonna be a link here, and this is strictly not, this is a, just a really quick update on some of the key items that we're working on right now. And
You let me know when you want me to advance, and I don't think it all quite fits, so I was trying to see if I could fix that quickly, but.
The entire, or, but I did, I did, because this is memorialized, and it's a living document, so this will be updated every quarter. And I, we would like to come in and do a face-to-face with you guys once a quarter, and just check in and make sure that our priorities are indeed in line with, that we're all on the same page. And, and a lot of times, it's been my observation, since I started with EDC, that we do great things, we just, we don't do a good job telling the story about those great things. So we are doing that now. We put this together, this is up for, we can, you know, there's a lot of things we can do, but this will get us started. So just as a reminder, for those of you who aren't familiar with our organization, just what our mission and vision is. And when we started, we're going on our 10-year anniversary this year. So it's really high time that we start creating these, these types of documents that we can refer back to. So under J C's leadership, we've been able to be pretty nimble. We've created an in-report that we've never done before. We have created an organizational onboarding process that's digitized, that's never been done before. We also fill for vacancies on our board that also is unprecedented. And it's all through the good work that our work has been doing for the past 10 years. And we've, it's not that, you know, this is years in the, in the making, we're just, and Marlo's departure, our former executive director, although unfortunate, did not stop us from the good work that, that we were, that we're already working on. So just, and like I said, anybody has access to this link, and everybody needs a refresh on some of our newer board members. I think it's important to note, we have a couple really key players on our board right now. About Westenberg and Melissa Kendrick are some amazing additions, and some really important in our leadership. And next slide, let's go to two slides down on membership, because this is something that I don't think we've reported on in the past. And I think it's important to know one more. Kind of the state of our membership, so we are really healthy, I like.
I don't, I am really sorry that I can't seem to fit this whole thing on the screen.
No.
Hold on.
There's a little.
This thing. All right. Yay, thank you. Okay. All right, here we go. And one more?
Yes. This is just the, the state of our membership right now. We have a really high renewal rate, which is says a lot about the leadership of our board despite our transitions, and our new member growth is actually ahead of schedule as well. The next slide is really important, because this is really interviewing the types of projects and the related job creation and retention as a result of this project. So if you hover over the image, it'll give you some numbers that have impacted on our revision project. So if you go over to expansion and attraction, those are the full-time jobs for the perfect, so over on the job. The one exciting thing, and one of the most important parts of the presentation today, and like I said, the rest of it, I'm not going into detail, a lot of detail, but the one thing we are resurrecting is our VR and E committee, stands for Business Retention and Expansion. It's been a very important part of the economic development ecosystem, and it's something that we, through COVID and leadership transitions and work transitions, we really haven't had. But under Jason's leadership, and then I just so happen to work on a similar project back in my community, so we are getting ready to launch that very soon, in the next couple of weeks. And that'll really help tell, tell this story better as we continue, so we'll continue reporting on those types of activities as well. And then I lied, I, I think I did say, I was going to say one last thing, but, but one last thing I'll, I'll just touch on. First of all, we just want to thank you guys for your continued faith and support, especially during COVID and in our transition, and having that confidence in us to really put your investment to good work for our community. And the one area that we, that Jason's, under his ownership, we've been able to do, which is, was something I wanted to do since I started here, but of course, we didn't have a lot of money to allocate for this, but is marketing and communication. So it's the way that we tell our story to the community. So hopefully, you've seen our newsletters, you've seen our articles in the newspapers, you'll continue to see that, and just continue to see our Facebook posts. And there's some data attached to, to some of that on the following pages, like how many people are reading our newsletter. I think that's an important part, a couple hundred people read our newsletter, 50% open rate is the highest of my 30-year career doing this. So I think that's, that's, there's a lot to be said about that, that means people are hungry for information. So no pressure, because it's just starting as a little like update to our members, but it's kind of become kind of a community resource. And then with the leadership of Tracy Warrington, we have been to compile some sales tax data, and that also is at the end of the report. I think it's a very interesting story, it tells in a in an image here, so I recommend everybody taking a peek at that.
Which, which slide is that on?
Go to slide.
And is this on your? People can find this link on that one, sorry.
All of these pages here, there's about four data sets, and it's really around sales tax, and it's broken out by county, city. And we have never had access to this kind of data before. So Marlo, our former executive director, worked really hard with the county to get meaningful data, and then Tracy Warrington, our data partner, she helped us to get into a readable graph. And the very last town, I think it's, is, is workforce data.
So it's supposed to change percentages for a while.
They are, and I, I will play this finger, and I will, like I said, this is a work in progress, so please, I'm looking for all feedback too. Like you forgot apps, and if it's something worrying, but these are, those data sets are through with numbers, and I will say, Jason and I have this conversation, and he's like, wait, January, I didn't make that much. My sales weren't like that in January. They are a tiny bit wonky in terms that sometimes they're about four weeks.
In the rears.
In the rears, so.
They don't meet it too precisely on a month, but overall.
Really, it's to get an overall average picture, but I could, I'm gonna do that first note to front. I would put a disclaimer on that, so that people are confused by that, because I did the same thing. We're really gonna keep them in a little, little in-rear, so.
Any question? I don't think so. Thank you for the, the data collection with the sales tax, it's really great to see that, and have that kind of deep dive into that sales tax data. Do you, um, you guys have been cracking according to industry, kind of correct, like where are the sales taxes coming from?
Yes. I, I'm industry.
Or like, can you tell us the, the, like, the highest? For the county?
Yeah.
Employer contributor?
Yeah, I can, I can.
Or if we can, I don't know, maybe just get some breakdown on what that looks like? Is it, is it online sales in the county, or is it?
Yeah, there is a lot of breakdown attached to, to this, but yes, I can.
Yeah, I think if we can work through that maybe a little bit, that might be helpful.
So we have a graph, and we have the retail and hospitality, and then the sales tax data is broken down by mix.
Okay. It is. Yeah, because I know we can't give out specific business information in regards to sales tax, but we just have that information around like hospitality, retail, online sales, or something like that. Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, because I mean, I don't know if that's where you're going, but it would be, you know, like, is it all tied to increased visitation, or is there, or, or, you know, are there other things?
Yeah. Well, thank you so much, Nancy and Jason, we really appreciate it.
Thank you guys, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Bye, guys. All right, so we'll move into item number two, which we had moved, which is the Lebo Lake County Fire Rescue presentation from Chief Daley on the option to purchase a Type 1 fire engine. So if you'd like to join us, you're welcome.
Appreciate the combination of the agenda. So I've given a, we've had a few different meetings on this, so I met with Tim Rory, the new city administrator, and also on the management board meeting, and a presentation for getting some city council ready as well. So I wanted to be able to obviously give you some of the city presentation, so that you can have an open discussion about a possible purchase for this type of opportunity. I went to Boise for the pre-destruction to the Type 3 engine, which is a downer, an urban interface vehicle, that, that's in production right now. And just, you know, I'm hoping to get, you know, in manufacturing, there's always additional costs when, when you're doing that, because you have to configure it for the use of that apparatus. So the initial specs, and then you go to pre-destruction, and there's additional costs. We just approved for $24,001, 11, 30,000. And which will be taken out of our fund balance. We'll take that out of our fund balance to figure it out. This one here, when I was on the floor out there, I saw this Type 1 engine, and I said, what did you guys do with that? We were building it as a demo, BME's building a Type 1 engine as a demo to just kind of bring around the country and try to get interest on, you know, more manufacturing for a Type 1. That happened in late 19. When COVID happened, and then manufacturing issues, and they moved from two facilities into one. And so it's just been sitting on the floor, and engineers, and plumbers, and electricians, and so forth, and just kind of building it out. So I got into a further conversation and asked him what the price would be on that, and it's $481. We couldn't get anything right now as a demo off the shelf, so anything on the 600. So I think that's where the opportunity comes in, is that it's already going to be some serious cost savings for a piece of equipment. That's on the fact that it's already almost built out. And right now, a time plane and build-out for a custom pumper like that, like we did for the 2016 Pierce, is at least two years out. So if you look at this apparatus, that's this one here, it's all about, like that, color-coded to what our frequency should be for a piece of equipment. And as you all know, with everything else, not only pretty, but kind of wide, we have a lot of catch-up to do, whatever case, and we're putting, I think we're doing pretty good right now. We're in serious need of a Type 1 engine. There was, there was a, for an example, last year, both Type 1 engines, we did three, that's the one we replaced, was how Type 1 was down, and we were running off the truck, the ladder truck, and the truck that was in the tactical tender. A little scary, or about, or I say about, it was about nine hours. We were running just on the ladder truck. So as you can see, on this level here, 23, the second is the second one down, it's in an orange color, it's slotted for 2023 anyways. Now, each apparatus, if you were to ask me for a part of the press nation, one of you, and we have the replacement for any type of piece of equipment, it's a, it's a lifespan of about 10 years. This one is a 2002 supplement, so we've kind of put it to its double life as normal agencies do when they replace apparatus. So you can see there, that is a lot of the 2023, we're kind of, kind of probably work on this project anyways, to try to figure out what that replacement looked like in 23, but this opportunity presented itself, that's why it's a little early, early on. But by time we, I asked them when we were out there, I said, well, what, what do you think the completion date on this would be? And he said, May. So we're looking at a couple of months. If you do remember, we, we put 100,000 in the budget for this year for capital improvement. So we kind of already budgeted for a piece of equipment, it wasn't specific, but now we could probably use that 100,000 if we actually put in the budget for this specific piece of equipment, for capital improvement. This, this form right here, this is the current fire fund. Two taxable tenures, and we're paying out of the fire fund balance, we only have two more payments on the tactical tender. That was about a $212,000 piece of equipment that the fire fund balance paid for. So we have two, two years left on that period, and then we have supported the Resident Reserve Program. So we have two, two years left on that period, and then we have supported the resident reserve program, forty thousand out of that fire fund as well. And then we have some other obligations that we could probably use this year for training for wildland program. And the configuration, which the twenty four thousand one eleven is in there for the type three. So even if we're right now, the fire fund balance has two hundred and four thousand. With the hundred thousand is in the budget itself, that's three hundred and four. We would. Have a hundred and twelve left over, which means that a hundred thousand is there, which means we would. Take away all the money out of the fire fund balance. We'd really only have about four thousand left. Is that something we want to do? It's, it's a gamble for the fire fund. Because if you look on this, this apparatus sheet again, under how things were purchased. Everything, all of the apparatus that we have, all of the equipment, was either done off of a grant. Or the fire fund, or supplement with the fire fund over the years, like a hundred and twenty five thousand towards the twenty sixteen Pierce, right? Other than that, the only two pieces of equipment on here that have been purchased with by taxation is the nineteen ninety six. Type six engine and the nineteen seventy eight Dodge utility. So other than that, all, everything has either been done by a grant or by the fire fund.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The, the balance, I'm sorry, you said would be twenty three thousand something? Is that earmarking the next number of payments for the Pierce and fire engine that we have?
So the Pierce is already paid for. Are you talking about the taxable tender?
Well, the, sorry, there's payments slated through twenty twenty six. On the, on the first line?
Oh, on the first?
No, she's looking right here. On the top line. So it goes out to twenty twenty.
You're talking about here?
Yeah. Yeah.
So these, so this right here would be what the city and county, in order to be able to do this apparatus replacement. Capital improvements on a schedule. The bottom line down there is what the city and county would need to save annually. So these would be the.
Oh, I gotcha.
Right, making away money in order to be able to be on a replacement schedule. So that, you can see in line one down the bottom, it's one point two million dollars. Annually, until some of the equipment was replaced. That's just for reference.
Okay, I was mistreating that as like a payment, required payments. I didn't, okay.
And I'll get into the actual payment of this here in a little bit. So the. If we had the hundred thousand down, there's only one other thing that I would like to be able to request within this, since we have the opportunity. And that's, that's for equipment as well. So. As I stated before, we're trying to play the catch up game, I think, just like a lot of other entities in the service world, our community. All of, a lot of our business is thirty, forty, fifty years old. And there's newer technology, there's better technology. For instance, instead of having hydraulic tools for rams and spreaders and cutters, et cetera, and battery operated ones. We budgeted one for the type three engine this year in the budget. It's a battery operated coffee tool, so it's a spreader and a cutter. It's a, you don't have to have the hydraulic reels and the, and the pump itself and all the, you know, workings that go along with that. Airbags, rescue equipment, et cetera, some hose. So if we were to add a hundred thousand to the price of this, make it five eighty nine. Then taking the overage of what it's going to cost, right? That's the additional construction that it needs, like configuring the compartments, et cetera, like we paid twenty four thousand additional for the type three. There's going to be additional costs of a new four eighty nine for this. That's to configure the, the compartments and make it operational for that time. We subtract that from the hundred thousand, then we'll add to the five eighty nine, and then whatever's remaining, we'll just purchase equipment. That's the need for this piece of equipment and put it in a lease purchase. So that it's paid for over a period of time and the extension of the lease purchase, rather than having an operational. Cost every single year in the operational budget. Does that make sense? If I lost you, please let me know. So four eighty nine for the piece of equipment.
Your whole loan is gonna, you proposing the whole loan covers the, the build out and plus the equipment?
Correct, at five eighty nine, which is still even cheaper than, even if you would have purchased something off the shelf right now. And then put additional work to it, right? Instead of, is that, at bare minimum, it would be six hundred dollars for a demo. If we were to build something out like the twenty sixteen that we did, which cost six hundred and seventy thousand. In today's market, it's going to be in the seven hundred dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars. I know that this is a big number for these types of equipment, it just, it is what it is. One piece of equipment for the fire department is probably fifteen or ten, ten cockers, right? So that would be my ask. We have a, this is a full complement of, of equipment that's on our type one engine current. And that is a total of a hundred and forty two thousand for equipment. So I, I would just suggest that you do a hundred, take off the, whatever the build out here, and then buy. And that right here, these are, these are kind of the build out things on this, on this form here. You know, those types of things. You see, this is the piece of equipment itself of all these pictures. And there's two in here of the interior of our car. We have one in the. The last. Well, serious electrical problems. We're driving down the road in the dark, and all the electricity shuts off in the vehicle. And once every, it won't, the cab just recently won't, the primer's out. The pump that, it used to be a two thousand EPM pump, and now it's rated seven hundred and fifty EPM. Because it's losing its capacity itself. There's a lot of problems with engine two. Fleet services are aware, said, if you can do anything, it's out of your fleet. It's no longer serviceable. So. How we go about doing it? And I know we have, and I know we're going to have some questions, two or four, considering the fire fund balance. That's, that's going to be what is, and I think that's going to be, is on what are, we are. Hundred and eleven thousand and the other things that are already allocated to the fire fund balance. This last, this sheet paper right here, I had thought of you some, reach out to some financing in our district room. To kind of get an idea of what five hundred thousand would look like. So a five year lease is a hundred a year. And a seven year lease is seventy nine. So if we wanted to be. Appropriate like what we have been, or what we were like this year, and put a hundred thousand away for the capital improvements. So we can, if we continue that hundred thousand obligation to, to be, to budget annually for the next five years. Then we're, that's not what we needed to do for the capital improvements that we were going to set aside.
To replace the one engine.
To replace this one engine, yeah. Now, there's always, I know that. There's always a hit or miss with wildland deployment. I can tell you something right now, we don't, we don't do whole land deployment with the money. It is, it is a. An additional thing that, there's an opportunity that's afforded to us. But we do it from the experience to send people out on wildland deployment to get that kind of experience for operational purposes here in county. So that they're well-trained firefighters for wildland aspects. It does supplement some of their. You know, their salaries, some of them really appreciate that, of course. And I think that's been a part of our retention, is being able to have them, have that additional funding to them selling. But it gives also an opportunity for us, and like I said, we're not putting a flash car on our back by any means. We don't do that, it has nothing to do with that. But when we could, when we had that opportunity to do contract for wildland deployment, or we have a, we have a. Plan to test in September up at the airport where it brings in general and travel. That means that we don't need to dip into the general funds of the city and county. And we can offset some of these costs, and that would be the plan over time. Whether the management board brings it to the board of county commissioners, or the city council and say, hey, you know what, we had a good wildland season. We have three hundred thousand sitting in there. How do we want to allocate these funds? Do we put it towards this type one? Do we put it towards the type three? Do we have other obligations? That are already obligated, that we pay down on, like the station or, you know, the resident reserve program, et cetera. So we do have that opportunity. It's not, it doesn't have to be strictly in the operational budget, obviously, it needs to go in there initially. But then we can try to be creative about how we pay that cost off.
The latter two here, I just want to make sure I'm reading the graph right. The replacement date projected, right, in an ideal world, it would be this year. And then the brush truck would also be this year, but are we pushing that? I mean, those are probably based on manufacturer specs and whatnot. Would we? Then have the conversation of kind of strategizing over the next few years for potential replacement of those, if those are kind of the next in queue?
Good question. So the type six, we're actually, we'll, we'll keep it in service because it's a good industry thing. But we are technically replacing that type six with the type three.
Okay.
So we're on, we're on par with the year and date of replacing, replacing, right? The type six, the nineteen ninety six, six oh three.
Because that'll stay in the fleet operational?
Fleet until it's no longer needed, and then the type three actually replaces it.
Okay.
And so we're, we're on par with that. We're, we're on track with replacing appropriately. Now, the truck, the truck is in nineteen eighty eight. And they don't really make parts for it anymore. It was just out of seventy six months while they were fabricating a part for the hydraulic. For the big turntable. Conventionally, that's going to need to be a conversation, but here's the difference between the truck and a type one. The truck, if you were to buy a new truck, you're looking at one point four million dollars, right? We don't need a new truck. It took me about two years to find this truck. It's been a good piece of equipment for our community. It services most, mostly the downtown corridor, all of our high structures. Or if we need an elevated waterway, or for instance, a rescue, like when a person fell down in the mine shaft over here. And get a vertical pick off the end of it. So it has its use, but it doesn't need to be a brand new piece of equipment. We can look on the good use market on that. Now, the type ones, though, those are the ones.
Because I have the agreement for the management board, just to make sure, you typically have really deployed that like once upon a time, like, and you train on it and whatever. But like in terms of like it really needs, it's not around multiple times a day or even a week, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, that piece of equipment is currently, ever gets used.
Okay. Sure, no, of cour-, like, necessary, but not, not really taking the brunt of like operational wear and tear. So we can extend that.
The type ones in the taxable tender are the, are the ones that keep going, the type six. Are the ones that get used the most for operations in the county. Especially the type ones. And that's why we need the longevity of that piece of equipment. And why, that's why I'm here, and that one is really, the use market out there for that is, is not.
For what? Okay.
I, I did some research on those. There is a, there is a twenty twenty apple right now, it's a cool one, and you're selling it for five hundred thousand. But it doesn't need any of the specs, like it has a three hundred fifty horsepower. Everything gets rated, or when it comes up here to like a pump, for instance, like this one has a fifteen hundred D P M pump, which is good. But it's going to be rated at twelve fifty once it gets here, because of, because of the. Now, we may need some points on that, so we'll talk, but I feel we're going to, we're going to make up those points by the type three. The type three engine, because we're going to have a higher capacity on the type three rather than the type six. So we'll make up for that. I didn't want to think too much time. I just, so this is in production, and it can be done. So I think what I'd like is maybe some direction from you, what I can do. And the boring, and council, and figuring out a creative financial way to be able to take care of this opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can just say a couple of things. I really appreciate this graph, this to me, this like gives us the big, like this sort of ten year picture. And you said, you know, every piece of equipment would be great to replace every ten years. So basically, like, we're doing this every ten years. Like our next county commissioners beyond us will be seeing this graph again, but everything will have gone through. So I mean, that's sort of like three million plus is like what we need to be thinking about every ten years, you know? So when we talk about this during the budget, like what, put in some money, you know, we need to spend hundreds of thousands every year, and we need to put that away. Somewhere in the one to three hundred K range. You know, and again, jointly city and county. To get up to that, you know, three point something million divided by ten every year.
But to that point, it's hard to do that when these situations come up.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess, I guess, we, I mean, I, I feel more comfort seeing this. Knowing that it's in the context of this, and you have a plan, but this isn't, this isn't like some emergency, this is the next thing that was planned for. Now, so for me, the comment, right, you know, this request in the context of this sort of helps my brain get my head around.
I'm just.
Large money down.
I'm having trouble following this accounting of the fire fund. Because this sheet from Donna says you have two hundred and four thousand dollars on it, and so I'm having trouble following this.
Okay. So the. The first three items is already obligated, so you'll see that toward the year twenty twenty two, a hundred and eleven five seventy two is obligated.
So that comes after two and four.
Correct. So then, there's other needs of the fire fund.
Okay.
Now, these would be flexible needs, like the training needs, seven thousand I had allocated in here. It could be three, it could be four, and that's to support the training facility. And the build out for all of that, for fire academies, and also just general training for the fire department. And if we have collective emergency services training, to build out a little bit more of that training facility. Because we only, we only did what was necessary for the fire academy this year. Which was a great success out there for one year fire academy, but there still needs to be more. So that's what a little more funding is for. The wildland program of forty two is to configure and get equipment for the type three. It's probably going to be roughly more around the thirty eight range, but I put forty two in there as a buffer.
Okay.
And then the type three, the twenty four, is here, the changes to the type three. And then the type three, the twenty-four, is here to change this to the type three. Additional changes, that's the building up. To where it's gonna be in service for our needs and the community's needs right up the way. So that, that total becomes one ninety-one, six eighty-three. So that three oh four that you see down there, the three oh four, that's with the hundred thousand of the city and county. Put into the fire fund balance, if you will, so the two oh four plus the hundred thousand. Allocates three hundred and four thousand in the fire fund balance term.
Okay.
Because we put it in the operational budget, but it's gonna be shifted over into the fire fund balance, because that's under the unit government agreement, that's where all the capital improvements are taken here. Just through that agreement. So that leaves a hundred and twelve, a hundred and twelve thousand. So the hundred and twelve, right, is the hundred thousand left in there. For homeless.
Okay. So theoretically, if we didn't allocate an additional hundred thousand next year, we'd have twelve thousand, a hundred and twelve thousand.
Okay, we would have twelve thousand if we were to purchase.
So then in twenty-three, you wouldn't be able to make a payment back to us for station, station two.
Correct. That is correct.
So. I personally have a problem with making obligations with my revenue.
Through the management of the wildland fund or for the?
Yeah, cause I mean. Well, I know. So I mean, these are just twenty-two obligations, right? So we still have the tactical tender that we have to pay for in twenty-three at twenty-eight thousand dollars. But if we don't put another hundred thousand dollars in there and he doesn't send anybody else for deployment, we only have twelve thousand dollars or a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And we have to make that payment regardless.
I, I hear what you're saying about like, I mean, we can't write checks, we can't cash.
Which is somewhat, what this is starting to feel like a little bit.
I guess in my mind, though, like that, you know, sort of having looked at this over the, the last year, like that's why we put a hundred K into our, you know, budget.
No, no, I, I agree.
We need to be allocating money above and beyond what the wildfire fund is bringing in to catch up to these.
And so if we have a huge wildland fire. Need locally, we don't send anybody out, how are we going to pay for these debts that we're incurring? What's your plan?
For the, for the debts itself, like me and what's already obligated into the fire fund?
Well, so you'll, you'll leave twenty-two with a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And then in twenty-three, you don't bring, let's say theoretically, we have a high season here, because we have high tourism, high visitation rate. We have wildfires that we need to take care of in Lake County, so you don't have anybody you can send out. How are we going to pay these debts in twenty-three?
So, actually, I had a conversation with Sarah earlier about this, so what we're doing internally is we'll be picking up that wildland program.
Okay.
So with the uh new resident reserves here coming on, because we just hired our other ones in the, in the fourth position on that grant. What we're doing is we're extending our season, like right now, we're on availability, and as I've, the, the ten years I've been the fire chief. We have never been on availability this year, so we wanna normally sort of achieve a lot of this. And that really depends on whether you go out, whether the conditions are good or calm, whether we have the personnel to do it, or the equipment. Right, on whether you even go on running the appointment, it's, it's been a gamble either way.
Right, right.
This is just gravy on top of everything else. In, in my professional opinion, you know, the, the fire fund balance is something that the fire department does to bring revenue in, but like I said, we don't do it for the money. We've been able to do it for the money, which has offset everything that is on this piece of equipment, except for one piece of equipment.
No, and I, I understand that, I just don't want to get to a point where we're so reliant on the fire fund. And we only have one stream of revenue into the fire fund, which is wildland deployment. That if we can't meet that obligation, then that obligation falls to the county as an unbudgeted item.
Right.
Is my concern.
Yes.
That we're loading this too full of higher liability than we have the ability to have cash to offset.
Yeah, and I agree, um you know, I, I didn't really have a say in the station two matter, uh that was between the city and county, that forty-two thousand six hundred for the next ten years. Um I don't know anywhere else in Lake County where somebody has been obligated to pay for their own facility, you know, so. What do we do with the forty-two six? Eventually, do we have enough in the fire fund balance to continue that, or is that something that the management board gets together? Why were we vamping the air government agreement to state, okay, well, you know, that, that seems, that seems a, a bit much. Why don't we shift that over here and, and then the fire fund balance pays for pieces of equipment? Because there's other pieces of equipment that will need to be purchased over a period of time, right? So there's gonna be a strain on that fire fund balance no matter what, and I think the, uh, commissioner's point is that. It's good that the city and county has finally put away a hundred thousand dollars, this is the first time since I can remember. In the operational budget to kind of offset that and plan appropriately for, for capital.
No, I, and I totally understand, I just, you know. Don't want the county to end up in a position where we're subsidizing because we've worn ourselves too thin.
Yeah, and I don't wanna be there either, but uh.
And I understand the need for equipment, because we have plenty of departments that rely on updated equipment and equipment to meet statutory obligations. But we have to be able to fit those into our budget, and I don't wanna be in a place where we have to fit in, you know, paying for our justice center and figuring out how to subsidize. This payment because we didn't have a good. There wasn't a need for us to go out on wildland deployment, and that was the only source of revenue under this fund.
Right, and I mean, that's why I think that this is better fit, like the type of agent put in the operational budget. So that, so that the city and county both know what it's budgeted for, and then because of the, the other obligations in the fire fund balance currently. It's in the operational budget, and then if there is a wildland deployment, then we offset those costs, not the other way around, right? We don't wanna obligate, you know, all the pieces of equipment, station two, the tactical tender, the resident reserve program into that fire fund balance and have. The fire department pay for all of those things or the services provided, right? We don't want to do that, because like what you're saying, then at some point, there may not be money to be able to support that. We don't wanna do that, but uh that's, in my, in my opinion, that's definitely bad business.
It looks like if, if we purchase this and take the opportunity that's presented to us, the next like specialty piece of equipment. A purchase or a replacement, the next time that might happen is twenty twenty-seven on the E one. Besides some of these like Dodge, yeah, besides like some like kind of what I'll call regular fleet. Pieces of equipment that seem to come up, which may be not so critical in replacement.
Right.
Because there, it's not, I mean, it's a transport vehicle, or, you know, it's not an engine.
And there's, and there's many opportunities for those.
For those.
Type six, like the, the.
So.
Uh the um forty-twelve in the A B C. We purchased that.
Right, okay, but, but this, if we, this seems like the last big kind of specialty piece of equipment to replace. The ladder truck, but the ladder truck, we've been talking, like, I would love to. For all of us to have the conversation, the management or planning boards, and say, okay, we're not gonna, because, based on our demand here. We're not gonna aim to replace that in twenty twenty-three, maybe. Like, we'll look at maintaining it and putting away money for whatever annual maintenance seems to be typical of it, because we can extend that. And maybe a projected then realistic replacement might be in another, or we might have this conversation in another. Five or six years, unless something catastrophic or really.
And, and the twenty-sixth, the first, that type one, sitting at second due, or so we got twenty years of, of the subsidy. Sitting in second year, may get an extended period of life.
Yeah.
You hardly stop ten years, here we go.
Right.
We just look at the condition of that apparatus, you know, in twenty-six or. You know, the ten-year day, the same age, what we're gonna help you get, years, we're gonna give you more years of life out of this piece of equipment because it's second due.
Okay. So if the I G A stipulates then that capital equipment has to come up here.
Of the wildland fund?
Out of the fire fund. And you're, you're. Um proposing to some operational budget, is that correct?
So the, the fire fund, the way it's been set up in the air government right now, if one is sitting in. The I G A, this one, the I G A, and I've talked to Lori about this, I don't know if I've talked to her, but I've talked to Lori, that one of the first priorities that we do in the management board is, is we do the I G A. It, it's out there.
Yeah.
Since twenty eleven, I think. How it's set up in the I G A right now, just fire fund balance, is seventy percent for capital, twenty percent to support the wildland program and its needs, and ten percent for training. So whatever, whatever the city and county puts into the operational budget, if it goes in the fire fund balance, in the, in the government agreement, it just needs to state that. This pocket of money is from taxation, and it needs to sit there and occur, you know. Funding, it doesn't go to the seven twenty ten, it's a hundred percent capital. That would be, that would be the way to do it, unless we just keep it in the operational. Budgets as well, under a capital, because we've done that first as well.
I don't think the, I don't, if I understood your question, I don't, I don't think that capital acquisitions need, must be paid for from the fire fund, I think the. Rule in the I G A for the fire fund is to put a certain percentage of it, or keep it for capital acquisitions as this accruing. Funds to invest. And yeah, as a, yeah, capital replacement planning. So. No more surprises, the rest of my turn, that's, that's fun.
No more.
This will bring us something to follow our department equipment up to, up to pretty much good date. You know, we're, we're done playing the, the big catch-up game, if you like. Now we can, now we can do appropriate process, looking at this, being creative with the management board and. From government agencies and saying, okay, what's appropriate next? But these, these costs have to be, they have to dwindle on the side, like the, the type three and the type one, we have to figure out a way, and that's my goal. Figure out a way to try to reduce some of that, um the taxation dollars and what we're putting into this equipment, like what we have been doing over the years. Whether it be grants or through the fire fund or at a contract work that you do.
I, I don't have concerns about replacing the type one, I know this that's been in bad shape.
I'm sure you heard Dana.
I've heard a lot about it, a lot about it. I just am concerned about the fire fund itself, which I think is an entirely different con- conversation. But that's, that's just something for another day, I think.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have that conversation, the management and planning board, and with the new I G, you know, revised I G A, you know, what's kind of the contingency plan? Should that wildland fund not perform and, and be available in the way that we're projecting?
Uh just to finish up my thought earlier, because I didn't, um, what we're gonna be doing now? And like I said, we're on the orange and blue list.
Yeah.
Now we'll go, it's a thing we're up over the one in December, so we're gonna extend that deployment.
Because of their staffing numbers?
Staffing in the type three gives us a, a more flexibility also. Because if you remember, we got rid of the two thousand one, it was the old, um, two thousand one four. Where we, we blew, we turned those, we had to replace the engine, all that, we got rid of that. It was the old. Terrible engine.
Yeah. Okay. I just think this should be a topic of conversation for us from, from forward, but. In our next budget cycle, perhaps.
Yeah, or maybe, I mean, sort of before we get into the rapid fire. End of year, then you can have discussion, is that a good time, work session with the city council, like about, I mean, cause I hear what you're saying, and, and maybe I'm not getting this, yep. Like, the, I mean, the, the wildfire revenue and grant funding is sort of awesome, if it, if it appears. That we sort of need to understand, like, year on year, what the city and county together need to be putting in our operating budget, and then a year where we bring in. Great wildfire revenue or a great grant, you can sort of maybe back off the next year of, of budget allocation. You know, but we shouldn't like bank on that, out of, on, on very. Daily work, and sort of like.
Right, so like, next year, next year, there's an obligation of one hundred and forty-four thousand. One hundred and forty-five thousand out of the fire fund for station two, the tender and the type three.
Yeah, or a hundred, yeah. I mean, to me, it's easier to. Forty-two, it's forty-eight.
For twenty-two, for twenty-three, it's the forty-two, the twenty-eight, and the seventy-two.
The seventy-two is in the operational budget.
Okay, so that's not included in the fire fund? Okay.
And then that's a five years. Cause I mean, for me, it's easier not to get hung up on exactly what piece of equipment is due in what year, um Sarah's turn, I was standing. You know, it's just to know that like, year on year, every B S C C and city is gonna have to come up with about three hundred K every year forever. And, and we'll spend that every year, but we have to be cleaning that away, and if, so. The most conservative budgeting approach is to have that in our budgets, our combined budgets every year, and if we manage to get revenue from other sources, awesome. You know, we can offset it like the next budget year, and the safest thing is together, we need to be putting three hundred K a year away. In some fund line item somewhere. You know, whether it's, whether we need to break out another, you know, equipment specific line item in the fire fund or somewhere else, but again, sorry, to me, like, to. I mean, and that, and that's a startling number, right, like.
Well, yeah, cause then that's on top of like an annual appropriation for five years for a lease of seventy-two thousand dollars.
Sure, that's just equipment, not buildings or.
I mean, yeah, so I mean, you know, putting away three hundred thousand dollars to save to replace equipment, plus the.
Yep.
The annual appropriation for current leases that we have, I mean. I would just be hesitant to finance this period, just knowing that, you know.
But I think that's the hard discussion we need to have, or, you know, discussion we need to have with city council before next budget season, it's like, you know. Is this the size of service we can afford?
Well, and yeah, to your point, though, get, do you suggest we try to purchase it outright, or upon approval, if the city can?
I don't know, cause I mean, if the, if the, if the ask is really for us to put in a hundred thousand dollars, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm forward-thinking the twenty-three. Because I. See the justice center costs and like everything that we have.
If you're thinking about liabilities and our ability and strength in applying for um lending for other things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if I'm looking at twenty-three, you know, like we already have this obligation of seventy-two thousand that we need to figure out how to pay for, we, um. And then we have the justice center, and then including this, and an additional hundred thousand back into the operational budget. That's, you know, the hundred thousand plus our seventy percent of seventy-two.
The obligation would be about a hundred eighty.
Yeah.
A hundred eighty a year. For the next five years.
Split between.
No, that's just county, no, that's just the county. In total?
Yeah, so it'd be, so a five-year lease on this is a hundred and eight, and then the actually seventy-two, so that's a hundred eighty. So it'd be a hundred eighty thousand for the next four years on the type three or five years on the type.
So the county portion would be a hundred and twenty-six thousand for us to build the fund balance and pay for. The tech tree without the payment for this.
The engine one.
The capital, the capital would be, uh, they subtracted until the heart would be.
So the hundred thousand dollars that we, that Jeff's talking about putting into that budget to build. So the hundred thousand dollars that we, that Jeff's talking about putting into that budget to build that fund balance, we wouldn't actually start building that fund balance until we've paid off.
Yeah, correct, correct. That is a basic rubber balance.
So we're not really going to get any further today than we will in five. We're not going to get any further five years from now.
Correct, but we will, we won't hold up time. But I mean, I mean, we could, I mean, we could put that away until the fund balance is built up and hang on to this whole equipment. Right? But I think, I don't know.
So can, if we're not necessarily deciding this right now, can we say that when's the next business management board meeting that we need to make this decision together?
Personally, I feel like if the city, if 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 council um felt deemed it to be appropriate, I would rather pay for it outright, or at least pay the county's portion upfront outright to the city. So that we don't have to carry the obligation.
Mm-hmm.
Is my personal preference, because like we did, for us, it would be much, it would be more helpful for our long-range planning, for our bigger ticket projects, if we could pay our portion of that.
I think that they would do the same. Play it, so so you're saying like you you could add that into a supplemental budget that we're considering to fix some other stuff, and and then you get that money sat in a fund balance to pay at least, we create our books.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, we could, if if the county's portion is three hundred thousand dollars, we just give that to the city, and if they want to lease it, that's fine, but the county's not going to subsidize the lease through our intergovernmental agreement of seventy-three. Like, that payment is not calculated in our operational budget to you. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but you just pay it.
We just pay our portion of that.
And I think they would probably say put in discussions that I don't, I don't want that as. But
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of the feeling that I got.
Just because we would pay more over time with interest, and I mean, I just.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense.
If we want to get ahead in five years, it makes the most sense to shoulder the burden now and then figure out a way to continue to build a fund balance from replacement, so we don't actually lose five years. Is my my opinion.
It's two things. Uh, one, what we have tried to do, um, and I'm going to, this may make it a little bit better about the decision. We bought brandings for our piece of equipment up to this point, right? Bought an eighty, we bought, we bought a piece of equipment for a dollar from some account. You know, if that turns you into a on the situation that we're at, um, for trying to replace this. But here's here's something that might make you feel better a little bit about the financial aspect of things, and that is, we as an organization, over the past two, ten years, we've brought in three point two million dollars. Three point two million dollars, that's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars average each year in ten years to offset the costs of these types of equipments that we're doing as an organization. Three point two million. I think there's something like to, you know, that's.
Yeah, no, that's great. No, that's great.
And that's what we want to continue to do. It's just that we are in, we are in desperate need of this, and we don't have the fire fund or grant opportunity right now to be able to take care of. It's before the fact. If we do it and get it, then we can work on trying to offset some of the costs.
Yeah. We'll also say the fire department is not picked on in asking to pay for your own facility, like the landfill in the airport and those those facilities that do generate revenue um or have the opportunity to, definitely, you know, are in the black and and pay their
Pay their way.
pay their own, you know, we we put those monies towards that same facility too, so don't feel picked on. Um, but is it safe to say that we are open to the purchase of this and to iron out the details? We'd like to have that conversation sooner than later with the management board.
I'll start with that. I'll give a DM to try to get a purchase, so we can do it together, so that we can move it back. And uh.
Yeah, I think we could do that, that's good.
Now, with the equipment, it's a bit of a problem to do it.
Okay.
Because, um, again, we'll save it hundred thousand, you know, probably over a hundred thousand, because you were adding some money to that, and I'd rather not be like, oh, we only, we're only doing forty-nine, and then and then here's the whole bridge for the configuration, and then, oh, and then we just piece of equipment to fit this apparatus. It just becomes a package and yet over a certain period of time, or like what the county wants to do, then we would.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'd rather do a full package to have it operational.
Yeah, definitely.
Like, get in the fleet and operating.
Yeah, so that you can, and then you'll dispose of the stuff then, right?
They should be trained, right?
Sure, okay. You just pull it out of service, though?
Yeah, yeah, no, no longer insured.
Okay, okay.
And then everything that's paid for on it, like maintenance, et cetera, eventually, okay, what we're going to revenue from training facility, and that kind of facility maintenance and all of that will be taken care of.
Okay, cool. Our next step is for you to convene the management board. Right? And then, and then how does this work for you coming back to us? And like, is there a date that we have to have to finalize this by, or what?
Pretty quick during operations. I mean, if I have like a straw about right now, knowing the way to move forward, I would have the management board Tim, Lori, and we'll get a few council one more time, and then come back with you for following the city.
Sure.
And that's that's like paperwork I'm doing, probably, you know, not doing. But maybe on our side, it's like working with Tim and finance department to sort of look at, like, kind of the two options of like, and
Sure.
some upfront versus, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
You still have something about the budget.
Sure, I just said, I'm not opposed to purchasing a new engine one. I know how desperate we are to to get a second.
Yeah, it's just needs everywhere.
I I know. I just want to make sure that, like, this is secure for for you and your department's needs, right? Like, I don't want you to run yourself dry. That's that's the one thing, right?
Yeah.
Well, and we'll have the next three years without any anticipated bigger purchases on the horizon to really see how that extended season of deployment might pan out for continuing revenue, and I think we'll have those close conversations with the city, especially through revising the IGA on what that Plan B is.
I think that's the first part. Or most of this.
Sure. Sure.
Should make sense.
Yeah. Okay, so, well, wait, you hear from me, when you're on the management board, do you need to take any kind of final actions to make?
I mean, I'm happy to make a motion to just, or a a move to direct Chief Daly to move forward in the planning of the acquisition of the of a type or an
Type?
Type one engine. Um, um, contingent or conditioned on also figuring out those logistics with the city um between the city and county financing.
All right, any further discussion? All right, so no further discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for that.
I apologize for taking so much of you.
No, no.
Well, thank you so much. Okay, so we will move into number three, which is Randy's files, thirty-two, back country zoning. Um, and you can move forward.
Okay, two minute, right?
Yeah.
It's getting really hot in here. Getting all flushes. It has worked?
Oh.
Yeah.
Works out. Thanks for waiting. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. I
Put it off this one.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about that. Okay. Sure, um, so I have some other resolution for back country. It's there to, you know, I have some um questions and concerns. And so I was just going to kind of go through those um just a bit. Um, so you have another resolution, ninety-nine of four, which was an interview with the Forest uh the Forest Service and the Federal Ranger District um from nineteen ninety-nine to ninety-nine forty-two, and I really think that there, you know, like you pointed out, um, there's some really nice talk about coordination of land development review and roads and different things like that. And I think, and I'm wondering about maybe looking to um maybe work with those partners again to do one that is um, I mean, either just kind of uh with new updated goals. This one, I think, was done for um comp plan and some different things that were being done in ninety-nine, and if you think back to what land development was like in ninety-nine, it was kind of a different timing. And I also thought it'd be good to lift up and just let the board pass this right. I accidentally grabbed the one that's not updated, but this is our standard referral agencies that every land development fund, you know, that comes in, that could be identified that there's a JPC, like a core service, or any of these folks have impacted. This is the standard referral agency, and I think maybe at the time that this was done, maybe the practice wasn't as memorialized as it is now, and this resolution actually um expired in two thousand and four. So I I think it'd be a really, like, good template to, like, maybe look to this, especially as we're starting to look at the the road use, because I think there's a really great language. So maybe it's a really good time to kind of reorient this with, like, new rules, and then
Okay.
um that would be my thought.
So now, don't refer, yeah, and I knew, I I saw that it seemed like it corresponded with the ninety-eight comp plan, but the particular things in there were still relevant as far as land development and within holdings and forest service and um, whatnot. So I don't know if that got forwarded to either of you, but I did just send that to Anne only at like noon today.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I found it Friday afternoon looking for um other uh agreements with Forest Service.
But it might be a really great time, especially um kind of, it's almost like it was written for back country. Roads and holdings within Forest Service. So I think it might be a really great guide um to maybe look, and and because I think in that resolution I filled in with those, the conditions we talked about, three of them in the resolution, one is actually looking for code itself.
I was wondering, the penalty?
Yes, the penalty piece, I just brought the code just in case. So when Chris and I met, we were talking about making that penalty um point, so exactly what it is, and so all of chapter eight of the land development code is enforcement and penalties. And it goes into a lot more detail than, you know, than than the resolution, or, you know, so it's so where we did it was within that code language itself, and really upheld that um any infractions um within back country zone would be held subject to chapter eight, as well as the existing ordinance, the ninety-nine oh four, um which addressed some potential violations, but chapter eight is broader about enforcement and penalties and just talks about um remedies and enforcement powers, and it really um is a great chapter about talking about all of the different possibilities that you may not even contemplate now, but it's really broad. So I think that it will strengthen the code itself, just reaffirming back to um the penalty or the enforcement and penalties that standard in the code, along with ninety-nine oh four.
Do we have, so there's not a new, like, a new penalty, a a fee for back country or for, what what is it? Sorry, what is the penalty? I'm sorry. For scratching in a driveway without a permit?
So it could be stop work. So there's a, there's a whole array, right? It may not just be a a fee amount, uh but the penalties are, it could be stop work, it could be revocation plan or approval, you could lose your your cycle. You could be issued a stop work, you could be injunct differently, it could be an abatement, it could be the check put back. Um, so, but those are all standard options within the code. So it gives us kind of a menu of options to pick on a case-by-case basis. Um, and so you, so I think it would just kind of allow us that the power is there to be able to invoke any of those other thoughts. There are also um cumulative kind of things that you could impose as well. So those are standard. Now, ninety-nine oh four, um, I think that fee is, like, seventy-one hundred thousand dollars. Um, but that may not be the best, you know, we may want to.
Yeah, because I was thinking more like revegetation and but that would have fallen under the abatement, right, and mitigating that impact potentially?
Exactly. Instead of setting up an amount which, you know, needs to be vetted, um, through maybe an every process or something like that, this is already built into the standard uh powers within the code itself to take that. So I think, so um within the draft language, we just went in and highlighted that this already lives here, and there are a lot of different layers that we couldn't place on it. And then um additional, there's a hearing process, there's the removal of the strict completion, and there's all kinds of, so it's the various different stages of um development and use, um as someone comes in with exercise theories, there's a lot of different um enforcement opportunities and different levels of penalties to treat each one kind of individual in things that are, you know, one being much better. Okay, um and then in the uh the resolution that is going to go with the other um considerations were, of course, further conservation, um incentivized conservation development for that country. There is um the mandatory report eight monthly, at least a year, and then a special of the board um to continue to do that, and then um further alignment with county adoptions, and I just put two in, but not one to county roadway use. So I address those as, whereas the board of county commissioners are dedicated continually to work on ways to incentivize conservation-focused development in rural areas as evidenced by the creation of the back country zone district, and whereas the board of county commissioners are desirous of monitoring all development within the newly created district and shall require us to act in support and keep the board apprised on a monthly basis for a minimum of one year and continually as directed by the board. Monitoring shall give the board the ability to ensure the intent and goals associated with the district are met, among additional recommendations, future alignment with county adoptions to include but not limited to county roadway use. So that was where um I tried to build in the other trade conditions within the resolution itself. Um, and then obviously, stop, uh, we'll, on a side note, um putting together a spreadsheet of just making sure that those goals are of just making sure that those goals are looked at for the next year and making sure that we revisit those and continue to and making sure this is our reality and that we realize this. So.
That whereas, that you just read through, the board commissioners are desirous of monitoring all development. That's kind of where I was thinking that, referencing that resolution, and I hear you in that it is expired and it is outdated, but because I had thought after it says development with a new district shall require staff to report and keep the board, I thought, and land management partners or thinking about the access issues, but maybe maybe there's just another way we can do that. To specifically name that?
Sure. I mean, I could certainly write something in that is real specific like that. Also, that, you know, now that we have bumped up this like fan review to a public hearing process, these partners would have been notified anyway. But I think also just, I just wanted everyone, or the board to know that we do, you know, this is our current list. Well, actually, it's not. I just I'm about to run one, six, six, twenty-one. But this is because we had turnover and, you know, and staff, but, but the agencies are all still the same.
Okay, right, right, right. And, and the
These are going out and, and, you know, on every single one. And, you know, I don't know what the practice was in ninety-nine, but I, I hope that you know a little more intentional now.
Yeah, and I think specifically these, we would make sure, I know there's some instances where we don't always get a response from referral agencies, but specifically with backcountry and because we have, you know, we condition on monitoring and like that communication with and with Forest Service in particular, because most of these inholdings fall within Forest Service land and with public works as far as like driveways or accessways. I, I, maybe it's not necessary, I just thought there might be an opportunity to kind of include that in here.
I'm happy to, but remember, whereas that we just highlight that critical relationship and interface with them as a collaborator and just add another whereas and and just identify that, you know, that that is, that we memorialize that that referral and involvement engagement within as a partner is, is critical to this. I mean, I could strengthen that really easily.
What do you guys think?
Yeah, I mean, I've already read, like, oh, yeah, that, that part of the figure.
It's pretty incredible. I love that. Okay. It doesn't super easy, and so I can either amend it and send it back, if you want to condition it with me doing that. Whichever, and I'm happy to read it into record with the condition or take it back and edit it whichever.
I'm, I would be comfortable considering approval with the condition that you kind of create that other whereas to really call out Forest Service and then even in New County, well, at least Forest Service. I think in the roadways too, because I'm not.
So I, I think, and so it's like public works or something, I, you know, I think that they are, there is the language, you know, like, but even that it's counted as, but you just, I'm trying to just kind of highlight that, that is coming and, but not limiting it to just that.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to read this?
Because we want to make it, I mean, we own a warrant from Forest Service. I mean, maybe Forest Service is like ninety-nine percent of the the key by one of the people who are also just reference BLM and maybe move on like state, you know, areas, maybe C W or Miss Pine, you know, ninety-nine percent Forest Service.
I Or do you want me to, yeah, no, whereas, but it'd be just like I could, yeah, I can, I can take a pretty broad.
Be like federal and state land management agency.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Again, knowing that it's going to be ninety-nine percent Forest Service.
Yeah. And then Yes, in the southern southeastern part, there might, that might be a BLM overlap right on the chiefy border in some parts. Or at least access through like chiefy and through other BLM in roadways to get to Lake County parcels. So when these other documents are created, if we were to renew this kind of MOU with the Forest Service and the, and public works gets full documentation of roadways and, and seasonal uses, where do we then maybe amend the code to refer to these things specifically?
So I think
Once they're complete?
So once that you would have, I think that what we could do is we can, so when those, those, just like, you know, I think this gave a a five-year term or something. I think that we make sure that they're part of the policy of adding to the referral agency list and making sure that that's part of, of that country. I just, I'm wondering how most good way to add in if you wanted to, I mean, we cover it with future line of county adoptions to include about number two, the county roadway use. I think maybe you could tie those MOUs to
Do we have to?
I mean, I, I think the, the, I think the concern is something dropping off, right? And I think it's always creating that institutional memory.
Right.
Whether it be current staff or future staff, that they know how to drive and make sure that those are never like, you know.
Memorialized.
Actually, and so, I, you know, I think that yeah, I'm wondering if, if, given the level of review that is already in place, knowing that we already routinely review with state and federal agencies, I'm, I'm wondering if, if, if we need to have a kind of correction or future corrections, because I think that will capture that, because these are, there's nothing unique in referring applications to federal and state partners when there's any involvement whatsoever. I think this just kind of strengthens it. So I don't think that you would have to amend it. It's a standard operating practice.
Okay, let's, yep, it does. I just want to make sure we don't miss anything and maybe that'll just be part of our monitoring conversations over the year and how this is actually being exercised and playing, playing out.
Absolutely. You know, they've been really great partners, as you know, having a great conversation for this is just about what happened. I'm very interested to see and, and if these, and we have nothing on the horizon. They know that it's coming with action. For your, this will be your April update.
On, on section two, it says, resolution is necessary because of changing social values, new planning concepts, and other social and economic conditions. Can we say other social, environmental, and economic conditions?
We could, if that's not the exact finding of the, that's codified, that's
Ah, in the
Yeah, they said the findings that were made to adopt a new program that's going to be the standard ones. But I can, again, as I am, I can add that in the very last whereas. I can, but I can, because I can do that above, if, you know.
Okay.
Because it's absolutely the case. So I will add environmental into the last whereas of the, for that.
Okay, okay.
And then I'll keep the finding the same, so it's
Okay. All right, well, I moved six, I moved to approve resolution twenty-two oh six with the addition of the language environmental in the second to last whereas, as well as the condition that staff develop an additional whereas addressing federal, the referral to federal and state land management agencies.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
All right. Thank you so much, Anne.
Thanks, Anne.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, okay, so we did that. You have the most recent copy of the annual board appointment resolution.
Okay.
Can we pull that up to update for number five, which is resolution twenty-two oh five? The annual appointments?
Yes.
And I will read those to you, so we can put that in.
I am ready.
Okay, so we have Charlie Benny.
Yep.
And he, his term expires twelve thirty-one twenty-two.
Okay.
Cameron Millard, his term expires twelve thirty-one twenty-two.
Okay.
Luke Corning expires twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Ethan Kirk expires twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Okay.
Hope Colts expires twelve thirty-one twenty-four. And then the ultimate is Matt Theaw, and he expires twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Okay. All right, save and
So print that out and give that to Cindy.
Okay.
But this will be resolution twenty-two oh five, so it will supersede the original board appointment resolution we did in January, because it updates the board.
Okay, I fixed that resolution number as well in this draft.
Perfect. So I will entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two oh five, updating the annual board appointments for board of review terms.
Second.
My second. No, thank you.
All right, seeing then all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Moving on to number six, which is a liquor license renewal for Fast Stop LLC one-one-six-six Incorporated. And Cindy has that for us from the Fergie and Coors office. I did stop in the Fergie and Coors office on Friday and looked through the applications. See any issues with the applications? Cindy, do you have any narrative on this renewal application? Okay. Any questions from board members on this renewal?
Um, no.
So I will entertain a motion for this.
I mean, that we approved the liquor license renewal for Fast Stop LLC one-one-six.
All right.
A second, thank you.
Any further discussion?
No, for me?
No, thanks.
Okay, seeing then all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and the next one is liquor license renewal for Ludville Incorporated. Cindy, do you have any narrative for this life and circumstance?
I threw that out.
Sorry. Any questions to my fellow board members? Seeing a motion to approve liquor license renewal for Ludville. All right, any further discussion? All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight is the lease renewal with Saint Vincent General Hospital in Lake County Public Health Agency. Chris, I believe that you looked through this for calling with public health and the hospital. Tim, did you have any additional information or questions? It's a renewal for the existing space that we rent for Lake County Public Health Agency.
And essentially, they the things that made it to the last lease that was in place, so
Okay. Okay.
But it was in fact, they, they're, they're prior lease, if our January first service is just to bring it back.
Any questions for the board members?
Nothing for me.
Okay. For a motion then?
Move to approve the lease for public health and Saint Vincent's General Hospital.
Awesome.
Right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Seeing then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number nine is a contract with Kramer Associates Incorporated Incorporated, my goodness. TA Kramer Aerotech Incorporated for consideration regarding Ludville Airport and accompanying professional services. This is a contract as low as Kramer. She's done with the Ludville Airport for quite a while to provide us some professional services and like mentoring to our airport manager to assist him with any kind of airport management specific questions we may have. Tim, do you have anything to add?
Other than just talking with questioner fielder earlier today, I guess what's suggested, you guys approved on the condition of adding and to the point of contact for the county as opposed to that's set for commissioners, it should be the board director myself who are guiding the work and directing, directing losses.
Okay.
Yeah, we're like that.
The very top.
Because, yeah, I just, you know, but at least we've said, I mean, things that, that well, it's the contract binding between, so that's just noticing the party. So you want a
I just wanted to make it clear that
the notices or
I was thinking it would go in whatever type of record that says that specific work will be at the direction of, you know, will be.
Yeah.
Well, but you're talking about in twenty-two.
Well, that's
I, I'm thinking in where it says services provided, it should be there, because it's like the client agrees, you know, as, you know, blah, 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 as requested under written assignment, maybe comma by, you know, airport director with concurrents by the county manager. Or, or, or not that level of review.
I guess that's to answer Tim to, to address your maybe about, was something that made the change? Or different assignments?
Just because the agreement is, is so broad, right? And the lender will be doing work based off of the written assignments, instead of it coming from a board member or the board.
My thought was, instead of having, you know, the, the written assignments will be essentially the, the, we sign off on and specify any assignment, who is the point of contact for that assignment.
I, I, I guess where my brain was going is like, in a, in a way to protect the consultants, you know, about who they can receive direction from, from the county, you know, so we don't get in a situation. I mean, the worst case is a situation is like they start doing some work, invoice for it, and we're like, who told you to do that? And it was like, Sarah.
Yeah.
You know, and it's like, no, 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 it should have been Josh. I just think to protect the consultant and that us being invoiced, it should be clear who the consultant will see direction from. And then if I shouldn't, it's like, we can do the board. I just think given the total work is sort of TBD in a way.
Yeah.
We have the hard
We don't, it says that they're, you know, that they're for, we're viewing approved, the client will view approved, sign it right prior to consulting date. Because I was gonna say internally, the work of commissioners and delegates, you already to set those written assignments.
I think we could vertically say that here, but the consultant doesn't know that.
Yeah, the point I was saying is there'll be an annual document.
Okay.
Work that they'll do, and that document will provide the parameters of the assignment. And so that's why I was almost thinking for the things that to say that, because depending on what work they're doing. It could be sometimes Tim will be in primary contact and it's sometimes Josh might be in primary contact. So maybe, and essentially that written assignment wants to sign off on the counter part of this contract. And so it, it gives those to the consultant.
In. When transferring this signed and executed contract back to the consultant, can we put that in like that transfer letter?
Oh, yeah, that, that was a, right now, this is just, this is the master services, essentially.
Yeah.
So my suggestion would be when you get an assignment, if they, you know, I don't know if it's going to be in a town, but let's say Josh, something like that. He will know, I'm going to specify who's the primary point of contact. And then that goes to the consultant, they sign off on it, unless they sign it, it comes back to you. You sign off on it, it, they, the commissioner does it, so we don't have to come back to the board to sign it. That would just been simple way I was thinking, we, now, we can definitely back it up.
But for you, just in that, I'm trying with that approach. To do that, but yes, I'm just, so we're not amending this every time there's a new written assignment.
Well, not the specific agreement, but effectively the assignments will act as a limit, as they will specify what the services are. So if that's something you, and I guess the question is, as long as there's no change in the plan from the Dodge that. These may be literally authorized to issue assignments without your review. But we can do whatever I want, I'll just, it took us a year to get better from the consultant. Do that, and we can also. We can do any way, which is suggested. I don't know when they need her to start, or she's on this time, because it was affecting.
I don't think it's a huge risk, it's on a huge contract, I just think as long as you and Josh have a clear agreement about like. Yeah. And, and, and the consultant too, because like, again, in the worst cases, a consultant gets like a phone call from airport advisory board member.
Right. And that's why, yeah, that's why this is, if they have to be writing, um, that was one thing I thought about.
Yeah.
Because it says the client will be approved each assignment, right, prior to consulting to base performance assignment, so. You know, y'all, where Tim have to sign off on it, of course.
Right.
So they can't just advise your board of them with this kind of Collins and everyone.
Okay.
What's your preference, Tim? Right, that's, because I'm happy to do it anyway, if, if whatever.
I mean, I think it's fine just to communicate, you know, put in writing somewhere, like maybe I can officially let you, Josh, as a consultant about. The consultant should undertake work.
Without giving direction.
Without.
Given direction.
Yeah. When we can, yeah, when we're being given direction by you or Josh. Right. Or you and Josh, I don't feel strongly, I don't want to tie you up.
That's fine, because if you guys do. Prove the contract today, then, um, in the, you know, transmittal to the vendor and to Josh, we can just make that clear that. Before laws start, before the contractor starts doing any work, that, you know, it needs to be written. Written assignment by Josh, and then Josh and I can work on, yeah, how that's. Great.
Um, I will. Move to approve the contract with Kramer Associates Kramer, oh my gosh. My hands are moving, my thing. Uh, Kramer Aero Tech Inc. for consider. Sorry, sorry. Regarding the Ludville Airport. As well as the professional service. Agreement.
Any further discussion?
Nothing, thank you.
Yeah, okay, seeing then all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks for asking those questions, Steph. Okay, so we're on to number ten. Sorry to make you stay. The past couple hours. If you'd like to come up, we're on a update in consideration for American Rescue Plan Act funding request from Cloud City Conservation. So Emily Olson from C four, Cloud City Conservation Center is here with us to talk through. The ARCA fund request from organizations, so I'll let you take it.
First thing was that if I cough or my voice is off, I'm not sick. I did a very long chemo race this weekend. That has absolutely destroyed my lungs. Yeah, so we sent this in. This fall, I think, early winter, when the county was accepting requests from organizations around the community. Our request is focused on our consistent work on the farm and with the school district and then. Our, our energy program and the kind of work that relates to affordable housing there. And I think some questions were brought back to me and I, I resubmitted those that are asked, but. I'm happy to either give you an overview. Or just answer any question.
Yeah, maybe just out of that, I mean, yes, we had that one discussion. And this is one of the ones. I think someone sent. There were some questions, and I just got hung up considering telephone with these three, Emily and. And also the city and Tim sent around as part of the packet to us. Emily's answers on some of our questions from that discussion.
Okay.
That I relay back them. So that's what, that's what those questions and answers are. In the email.
Yeah, the, and their request were twenty-twenty-two, thirty thousand, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
Or twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Yeah, it's for seventy-five thousand over the three years with slightly more this year because we are. Doing some pretty big construction projects on the farm this summer that's going to help. Eventually, once it's all completed, hopefully by next season, we'll actually.
Was that split between the city and county?
Um, no, so we had submitted a request to the city and the county. And so the city funded our request, which was just twenty thousand for our energy emergency fund. Um, and I, I guess that was lost in communication or there wasn't communication on like how we should submit these requests. So we had done a separate line for the city and the county.
Yeah.
And the city had specifically asked that we just request funds for the energy fund.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was part of why we did that, joined the city, because we've gotten some inconsistent. Like this. Where it was really different for the city and county, and someone was just like the same thing, but with a top, with the chair. So I need to tell like, this is not.
Then food access.
So yeah, I do that for, for specific to, um, construction on the farms, hoping to. Increase our ability to grow food there, and then also a partnership that we developed with the school district in goal. Where we're hosting, more hosting in the airport service number, focus on youth education. One, this school district is not meeting their nutrition standards. And then just the opportunity for youth in our community to get involved in the food system and know about where food comes from. We're getting our hands in the dirt has just been, it's been proven to be extremely effective across the country. Um, and actually that partnership has gone so well that Mountain Roots, who we host the American, is really pushing us to host free service numbers next year. Um, one of whom would go to St. George's. But that's a whole nother conversation. So actually, I think your contribution. Um, the matching funds there would increase to. Around thirty thousand dollars, but we would have to raise. The match back. Um, and then our affordable housing is focused on funds for our energy emergency fund. Um, which is actually then since renamed the Energy Assistance Fund. Um, but that came out of the work that we were doing. Right at the beginning of COVID and conversations with the unmet needs fund and conversations with the. Um, with Christine about the housing coalition and the work that has been done there to really. Learn about the challenges our community is facing around affordable housing. Um, I know the focus right now is really on just creating housing, but I would say the reality is. Um, considering the age of our housing, a lot of our population, especially in here, is at risk of losing their housing. Um, most standard pieces include a clause that, um, if you have a passing utility bill, you can be evicted. And this fund in particular, we try not to pay utility bills out of it. We have a partnership with VOC. Where they actually provide us with fifty thousand dollars a year for the last two years to just pay utility bills for the county residents. Um, the assistance fund, we focus on things that are health, safety, or energy emergencies, and they generally contribute to. A much larger utility bill. Um, so in the last two weeks, we have. Replaced a furnace in a mobile home that caught on fire. Um, their home is now heated safely and they can sleep through the night. Um, we replaced a, I don't know for that the name of it, but an exhaust pipe for, um, someone in Wood Pellet stove. That was, actually wasn't up to code with the fire department and was, and they smoked into their neighbors' windows. Um, but they met our income requirements and so we fixed that for them. We replaced a number of water heaters this winter. Um, and what we've really found with each and every one of those situations is that if we weren't able to step in and help. Um, they would not have been able to fix it. And also every contractor that we've hired for that, for that fund has been a county contractor. Um, so for the most part, that money not only assists directly, assists Lake County households, but then it goes to pay a business in Lake County. Um, and then we did add in some tech staff time to help administer this fund because we found. Exactly a year ago, we hired a sustainability manager to do both zero waste and energy. And we found that the time to administer the energy program is a full-time position. Um, so, um, hopefully with your support here, um, we actually will, our energy, will create a new. We'll have a now full-time energy position and then we'll be hiring at part-time, like year-round as our position.
Cool. Okay. Do you have any other additional questions for Emily or any other points you'd like to chat to while we have some?
I, I don't really know. Help one of your councils and discuss. Think back to that meeting, it got to be a bit of a blur about all the different. Programs and, or funding requests you're getting. And I figure I have it together.
I think, no, that's helpful. I just, I just, and I hate. Feeling like I pick on you all the time, but I really have a hard time like figuring out how C four is working with like human services and. Probation and use it, because you use those as like, you know, probation folks work at the garden and it's really therapeutic and that's great and like. How, but how that's actually integrated into like the school district curriculum. Um, and, and I also have a really hard time, I have a hard time connecting that and figuring out like. C four is just expanding like beyond your ability to sustain yourself. And you've asked for more and more money every year, so how do we better incorporate that in my mind with like CSU extension? And now you said, you made a note to that here, but like in my mind, that's. A way to figure out how to tap into additional resources so that C four is better self, more self-sustained and or. Like what, you know, I think the unmet needs committee is just doing utilities and rent, right? And so I love, like, if you're doing actually conditioned, like paying for some. Things like, like, I feel like that should be something we look at incorporating into the two-way funding that's coming in for housing. Like, how do we just, how does that become a part of? A program that's, I couldn't agree with you more. Like, I think current housing conditions are. Really what we need to focus a lot of our time on and like having people in secure housing in rentals that are safe and. That they can stay in, so. How, like, I don't, you know, like, everything you're doing is great. And I hate feeling like a monster being like, okay, well, it's always like more and it never seems like.
So I think there's a few things there. Um, in terms of our annual funding. From you all, which we're greatly appreciative for, um, our historical, like, I think when I look back through the records. Historically, we've never asked for more than forty thousand dollars. And I think any change in that funding was actually on account of the commissioners just deciding to grant less or what we had asked for. And as a part of our overall budget, it has actually just decreased as a percentage every year because our overall budget has grown. Um, and so even if it feels like there's changes from year to year, and I know, um, our last two requests, you did approve the full amount that we requested. Um, so I think it was an increase, um, from maybe three years ago. And it actually funds less and less of our work. Um, but it is crucial to our work because each and every one of our funders, they want to know who else is funding us. Um, and they see that the county is funding us on a consistent basis, um, and it's been a huge part of our work. Um, I think this particular request. Nothing in this, I would say, is, it's not creating new programs, it's helping us grow programs that we already have in existence. Um, it will make a difference in our ability, um, to implement those programs now as part of COVID recovery. Or if it means we have to undergo a capital campaign and spend, um, a year to three years raising these funds. And so I think that's, that's the biggest difference for us as an organization. Um, there's no question if we're going to do this work or not. And, um, I have been talking with Christine about potentially getting funding through two A, um, which we would love to do. Um, but I also want to respect that our community right now is really focused on just having housing available. Um, and so I don't want to show up and say like, actually, I think we should focus on this. Because I think that work is so important, um, and there are aspects of that work that really overlap and. C four has changed a lot in the last three years. Um, I think, um, we are actually rewriting our mission and vision statement right now to better explain to the community what in the world we do. Because it's very confusing at times. Um, I would say it's at the intersection of environmental justice and health equity. Um, and that was a decision that the board made when it created our vision statement, healthy people, healthy planet, and when they hired me. Um, that was something I said to them in my interviews, that. I am equally as passionate about the environment as I am about health equity, but I'm not going to leave that work behind. Um, and I really think like with our energy program, it was just, we just looked at and listened to what are the challenges that our community is facing. Um, and that's why we started, that's why we started bill payment assistance. Um, and that's actually, we don't have to raise any money for bill payment assistance. Um, energy outreach Colorado was really excited that we reached out to them because it was formally run by DHS. And then they decided not to offer that program anymore, um, which I don't know when that happened or why. And I think that, um, a lot of, you know, we don't talk openly as much about how we partner with DHS. But we work really closely with, which is a state imperial funded, um, energy assistance program that is actually much harder to get into. Than our bill payment assistance program, but we do help with applications. We refer people to me all the time for that program. We also work very closely with unmet needs and full circle on their family resource center. And I, I think it, it hasn't really been shared because again, we don't want to take away from what anyone else is doing. Um, but we've actually paid utility bills for unmet needs since, excuse me, since, um, I think we started October of twenty-twenty. Um, unless there's a bill that they, that we cannot cover the full amount of, because we do have limitations. Unless there's a bill that they, that we cannot cover the full amount of, because we do have limitations set by our vendor. They, they don't pay utilities until someone has come to us first. And there are a few households in our county that have bills that are upwards of ten to fifteen thousand dollars, which is mind-blowing to think about. But together, we're working with those households. We have them on payment plans. They're not getting calls from Excel like it's a creditor anymore. And so we do work really closely with those groups to get people into these programs. And I think, you know, I haven't talked with DHS about this, but I do think that both Full Circle and C4, through our financial assistance programs. Have really put a lot of work in to say like. Yes, I can't approve your leave application, but like, we count, like, here is the person of the county, like, I know Nancy, I've already talked to her about your situation. Like, I've read through the application, so like, I can't say, yes, you're approved, but like, the chances are that when you go, you're going to have a positive experience. And so I think we've both tried really hard to help increase our community's trust of DHS and interest in like going there for assistance. And I think together, we've really created a safety net for our community, where now when people walk through a door, we can say, yes, there is hope. Okay. I hope I answered some.
That was great.
I am asking you for more money, but I think that it is in alignment with like what these funds are supposed to be used for. And I think that. Yes, it's a, it's a lot of money, but if I updated the matching funds here, at least for this year, I think when I submitted it. We already had over a hundred thousand committed for, as a match for the thirty thousand we're asking for, and I would say it's probably triple that.
So some of your contributions, I think, I mean, I also want to, some of it's a little hard to know, like, what, you know, what's C4 doing versus like what other entities are doing.
I'm sorry. Hold on just a second. That's an alarm. My bad. Okay. I'm sorry, Jeff. Not an emergency call this time.
Well, just, I mean. You know, in like environment sustainability, you know, and, and equity stick there, you know, the city's doing some stuff, and county's doing some stuff, and C4's doing some stuff, and other, and he's doing some stuff. It sort of feels like, you know, some like workshop or tree or joint session, and I'm just, okay, what, what are we all doing? What, what would be nice to be doing? Because we don't have like a county or city sustainability staff versus like the city put in needing chargers. Kayla and the city did, you know, this local planning, just going to have some environmental benefits as well as, you know, maybe benefits. So we're not doing lots of stuff, like wildfire mitigation. Ankle's on that. But, yeah. C4's doing, C4's doing, but it feels at times a little scattered shock, because you know, we also have like a pussy. Sustainability stuff. Not, not that exactly at all, but like, you know, there, there's no one place where all the opening things, like, need to talk about.
Right. And it's always hard to keep up with like what is available through exist, like DHS or something? And then where those that fall off that aren't eligible, or you're just not reaching folks and where the gaps need to be filled.
Yeah, I feel like something, I mean, like, we kind of, oh, here's a good idea we should be doing, and like, hopefully, I don't have like a staff person to go like. For a budget line item, like, ready to go. This body of work.
And I think, sorry, not to interrupt, but I think on a lot of these things, like, C4 is happy to play that role. If we do need a, another community coalition on sustainability, we are happy to go that route and facilitate it. And I, I would say there's like no cost associated with that. That's just something that we would love to see in the community. I think we have taken the approach, especially over the last few years during COVID, of saying, we understand that. Even though we as an organization believe that some of the environmental issues we're facing, especially climate change. Like, it's going to be more, have more of an impact eventually than COVID. But we also understand that like that is not where our community is at. And so I think that's why we brought this health equity lens to our work is we really want our solutions and our programs to start where our community is at. So do we want to pay people's utility bills? No, but if we want to have a conversation about energy in our community, I would say that is the most pressing issue. Is can people, excuse me.
It's okay.
Can people in our community, like, actually afford energy right now? And the answer is no. And so we as an organization, we, we want to start where our community is at. And so I do think, I do think it would be great, there's kind of two separate things there, there's what are the services available? I, I do think amongst the organizations providing us services, we don't have regular meetings, but we are in conversation on a regular basis. And we do. Sit down and we have, at least between Full Circle and C4, we have an agreement where we can share, if a client gives us permission, we can share client information. And we sit down and say, like, okay, we're going to pay this much out of this fund, and this much out of this fund, and we're going to get them into X, Y, and Z program. And so we do do that for individual households already.
Sit down with who?
Like, Full Circle and C4.
Okay.
And it's. I think it's funny, the number of thing, I mean, that's not funny and sad, but what we've learned is the number of things that fall under energy. It's just any amount of assistance available. I think a lot of people. Don't realize what's out there until someone says like, hey, you, here's what you're going to apply for, and here's what this fund is going to pay for. And that's needed in our community, those conversations. And then I think on the, the other end, the environmental and sustainability piece, everything you just mentioned. Yes, it would absolutely make sense for us to have a community-wide plan. I think we're doing our best to get involved in each of those, I've been to meetings with each of you on those things in the past few months. And I think that was a question I asked at the transportation piece, which I thought was really interesting, but it was. Hey, is, is this trying to solve the urgent needs of our community, or is it, is our goal to really reduce ridership? And, or increase ridership and reduce single passenger cars on the road? And if that is it, there's a whole nother conversation to have. And that goes back to the whole employee membership I proposed to you. Which is, and really starting with a greenhouse gas emissions, which I know you have your own feelings on as a part of the founding research there. But I do think we kind of need to figure out what is our starting point as a community? And how do we bridge all these things together? And that is work that C4 is more than happy to take on. As part of our, our particular operation. I would say we have the capacity for that and interest.
No, that's, that's fine. I, we don't have to go into it too. I just wanted to say, I don't think, I, I encourage you to have more conversations with other folks about. The housing work and where the focus is, because I think there have been a lot of people, including the three of us, who are concerned about existing conditions. And would love to see more programs created to address that. And not just going vertical, because we're never going to catch up. With that, just that.
To Sarah's point, like, those programs that, that you're talking about, like replacing heating units or water heaters or, or those types of things. Those help build housing security. I think that's something that's needed as well.
Yeah, I think that's one of those things where it's. Our organization has the energy focus, and it's trying to convince everyone at C4 that even like, hey, we need to be a part of this affordable housing. And we have to talk about it this way, because it does increase housing security, and it achieves everyone's goal.
And I, I don't know if this is like a stupid question. But I'm assuming that when you do something like that, like replace a water heater, you talk about energy efficiency or replace things with more energy efficient.
Yes, so all of our, across all of our low income programs, which the financial requirements depend, but our assistance fund is kind of a catch-all. Because you just have to make less than the area median income for your household size. And then we do refer people to other programs if they qualify for other programs. We don't just pay their bill. All, but across all of those programs, we have energy education paid for by Excel. That everyone goes through, and it includes setting goals for the household on how to reduce their energy usage. And then we do also, through our partner, Energy Smart Colorado, which is on a summit. We actually capture all of the information about what we're replacing and what we're replacing it with, so that we can calculate the energy savings over time for them.
Do you ever work with DHS on like adult protective services calls or cases?
They have not really referred anyone to us. I think, um, Jimmy and I are a bank to touch base. We work pretty closely with Nancy, who I think is a part of Wraparound, and she's funded through the LEAP program. So she works on LEAP applications. So she has sent clients to us for some of our programs that we're working to get on some.
Yeah. Good, okay. I don't feel like I have any other questions.
I don't think maybe just, I don't know if we want to, I mean, I don't. If we have, if we want to do something supplemental, or what, what the right actual, this is the action is.
When we approved a Bright Start request, we just approved it in meetings. For a motion or any further discussion by any of our members?
Go ahead, I'm starting to pull up.
The total is seventy-five thousand over three years.
Yeah. Thirty thousand the first year, and then. Twenty-two thousand five hundred each year for the two years following. And it's not in here at all, but I would be more than happy to, and I'm already planning to provide you an update each year on what we actually accomplished. Probably just as part of our general request with that update there.
Second, I'll move to reapprove the Cloud City Conservation's application for allocation of county American Rescue Plan Act. For the total of seventy-five thousand over three years.
Okay, one second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing then all those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, thanks Emily. Have a great day. Thank you for being so patient.
I'm learning all that by air.
All right, so the last item on our agenda today is the Veteran's Service Officer Report. For the month of February. All right.
I'm going to approve the Veterans Officer Service Report for the month of February twenty twenty-two.
All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. That concludes our agenda today, and so we will adjourn at three twenty-five PM. Thank you very much.